All right, we'll call the meeting of the City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of City Council present, everyone is here. You will stand. Our Boy Scout troop number 1424 will present our colors and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Post the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Detail forward march. Left, 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 right, left. Left, 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 right, left. Detail halt.
Thank you.
That's some precision drilling right there.
Yeah. Who's doing the golden tree?
Probably you and whoever from Missouri City Green.
Missouri City Green, let's get Missouri City Green up here. Sometime ago, we used to have a program that was very similar to the Clean Restaurant Award, where we gave the beautification award to businesses in Missouri City that had kind of gone beyond the norm in beautifying their business. And so I wanted to get that started again, and we figured that Don and his group didn't have enough to do. So Missouri City Green has taken that responsibility on to, under Paul's guidance over here, to help us recognize those businesses for their beautification and start doing that on a quarterly basis, hopefully. And so they're here tonight to award that first one of their deals, so.
I just took a little.
So you're up, babe.
You just said everything I was gonna say.
No, you can talk about the business that you picked.
Well, how we went about the process, we, several of us took photographs throughout the city and sent them to our subcommittee chair, Pam. And we met, I don't know, we had maybe seven or eight photographs, and we're encouraged, there's quite a few out here. And in coming months, we will be making more presentations. But tonight, we're partnering with the Parks and Recreation Department, and Pam will introduce our first winners under our auspices.
Very good.
Mayor, council members, I'd like to present to you Stephanie and Darrell Green. If you all would please come up. It's Arms of Love Learning Academy. This is on Independence right after 2234. We're always looking to make this place look better. They have done a fabulous job for us. Hopefully, we'll get more businesses emulating what you all do. And with that, I will present.
Very good. We're gonna make a picture, come on, guys.
We gotta come. Oh, sorry, Paul. You know I can't see back.
It's me in the middle.
Yeah, in the middle, right there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right.
I remember when y'all came to us and promised what it was gonna look like.
Well, hey, they did it.
Of course, Don's taking full credit for that.
Which time?
Okay, now a proclamation to read. Gary, you gonna come up here and accept this? This proclamation says, "Whereas April marks the anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, we sought to eliminate discrimination in housing opportunities and to affirmably future housing choices for all Americans. And whereas the ongoing struggle for dignity and housing opportunity for all is not the exclusive providence of the federal government, and whereas vigorous local efforts to combat discrimination can be as effective, if not more so, than any federal efforts are. And whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, diminish the rights of all. Now therefore, I, Allen, O, and Mayor, let it be resolved that in the pursuit of the shared goal and responsibility of providing equal housing opportunities for all men and women, the City Council of the City of Missouri City does hereby join the national celebration by proclaiming April 2014 as a fair housing month in the City of Missouri City, Texas, and encourages all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in Missouri City to abide by the spirit of the Fair Housing Law." You gonna make a comment?
For inviting me, too? You know better than that by now. In what is, if it's not the most ethnically diverse community in the United States, one of the most, I would think fair housing should not be a significant issue. Fair housing is simply, you should be able to choose to live, or you should be able to live where you choose to live, assuming you can afford it. And that is the fair determination, that is what fair housing is about. And in my very simple way of stating it, fair housing has one color, and that color is green. It should not turn on anything else. Let's support fair housing, we have a great community, I don't think it's a big issue here, let's stay alert to it to make sure it is not an issue here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I got a special treat for y'all tonight.
We have some of our community's finest ladies in the house tonight, coming up to receive a recognition. I'm gonna invite the Girl Scout Daisy Troops 157002 and 142019 up to the podium. Not more than an hour ago, these young ladies helped release several beneficial insects around City Hall as a natural alternative to pesticides to protect some of our plants and flower beds. Come on up here, ladies.
Ladies, do you remember which insects we learned about tonight?
What did we learn about? Ladybugs?
Ladybugs.
Lady beetles? Praying mantis?
Who remembers the tough one? Lacewings. Yeah, these ladies did a fine job, and they're all taking some praying mantises home with them this evening. So how about a round of applause for these?
Are y'all taking ladybugs home with you tonight?
Wouldn't we like it or not?
Yeah. Praying mantis, so your mom and dad won't like the praying mantis, they're scary, aren't they? One, two, three, one more. One, two.
Mayor, mayor.
Thank you, ladies.
The parents wanna take you.
Yeah, for the parents. You can come up here, wait a minute, girls, come back here. Mom, they're all in the back there. That picture from way back there doesn't look very good. We got a microphone in the way, yeah, come on up here. Get up here close to them. Girls, this'll be on national TV tomorrow. Thank you, ladies. Good job. Y'all gonna hand me ladybugs home? You got them all out there, okay. Let them have fun out there. All right, item four, public comments. I did not have anyone sign up for public comments tonight. Item five are staff reports. Item five A is a presentation of the quarterly financial report ending March 31, 2014.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We wanted to give a presentation of the quarterly, oops. We've got loaded the quarterly investment report. What I wanted to do is go over the period ended March 31st is the quarter ending, which is, and to give you a snapshot of where we are, we've gone through a third, the third quarter, which is about 75 percent of the year, and to date, we've got six million dollars over and above what revenues over expenditures. And that money will be, because we collect all our property taxes, that's why, that keeps us going through the rest of the fiscal year. General fund, property revenues, or excuse me, revenues, property taxes, we've collected 92 percent of our budget. Sales taxes and other taxes, we've collected 59 percent. License and permits, 102 percent of our budget. Fines and forfeitures are down a little bit, we're at 57 percent. And other revenue is at 53 percent. Expenditures, on the other hand, are at 32 million, excuse me, from January to March, we're 8.2 million, which is about 9 percent higher than we were last year at this time. And that's but on budget, on target.
Our collection, are we on target for what we've been in the past, as far as our collection rate?
I was gonna go back, I forgot a slide here. Our property taxes are about 58 percent of our total budget, and other taxes are about 16 percent. Our sales tax is about 7 percent greater on average than it wa, greater than it was last year. Your specific question is?
Our collection of our property taxes.
Yes.
Is it the percentage, is it on target for where we were in previous years? Is it lagging? Is it ahead? Is it?
It's a little bit ahead.
Okay. So the economy is showing some recovery?
That's right.
And people are actually able to pay their taxes, that's the key, okay.
Specifically, in our revenues, building permits was 182,000 more than it was last year at this time, more this year than it was last year. Plan check fees are about, what, 48,000. Electric franchise fees are about 78,000. Fire department reimbursement is up 38,000. So we're, there are some decreases, we're not seeing, our fines and forfeitures are not quite what we budgeted. Okay, okay. Thank you.
So on the, on the fire fees, that's our, the new fee that we implemented, is that what that is? Are we beginning to see any of that yet?
No.
We're not seeing any of that yet.
I didn't identify it here, but I will in the future.
Okay.
Michael's doing something kind of fancy with me here, and I'm not. Here's the general fund balance, and this is where I said that to date, we've collected six million dollars more than what we spent, and that, of course, carries through the times where we're not collecting as much property tax, through the summer, or through June. And then, this is where we show the percentage of revenues, 58 percent is through the property taxes, other taxes such as sales taxes, 16 percent.
All right, go back to that one a minute. Where was, and I think we're beginning to see this trend where, as I've said before, we're beginning to see our, our property taxes be replaced by other taxes, sales tax and stuff. What, what would you say the property taxes were as a percentage two years ago?
Well, I'm trying to remember, because we normally present that as a budgeting item, is that, you know, we're trying to go from where property tax is probably more like, or our sales tax getting into where it's more like from 16 percent to 19 percent.
Okay.
Taking more, more a bite of the budget. This is not, oops. But anyway, that's, that's, that's the report.
There's our sales tax trend.
Sales tax, of course, as you've been seeing on a monthly basis, has been up, and this last month was 21 percent up, but on average for the year, it's, it's about 7 percent. But, sorry about the slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, any questions? We're moving in the right direction, anyway. Thank you. All right, item six is a consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda printed?
So who did that consent agenda?
Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion. Who made the second? Councilman Robin Cat? Robin Cat. Councilman Ellen Cat. All those in favor, motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. There are no zoning public hearings, there are no public hearings and related actions. Eight are appointments, there are no appointments. Item nine are authorizations. Nine A is consider authorizing the mayor to execute the first amended and restated interlocal project agreement among Fort Bend County, Sienna Plantation Management District, and the City of Missouri City for maintenance of the traffic signals within Sienna Plantation.
Move to the now.
Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second. And I guess really the only thing we need to say here is that because Sienna's not in the city limits, somebody has to pay for those, and that's why this item is on the agenda, so that the citizens of Missouri City who continue to think that we pay for everything in Sienna need to know that we don't.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just for clarification, it's a restated of the first agreement, we're adding one more signal to the actual contract.
Yeah, where is that?
It is at Sienna Ranch Road in Sienna Springs, and we're increasing the monthly allotment from 300 to 400 per month that the, at the Sienna Plantation Municipal Management District pays.
Speaking of that, when is that to be open, all the way through to, I guess that, what is that, is that Sienna Springs that goes through?
Sienna Springs is all the way through, it becomes at the bridge across the...
Oh, it's the other one, then, I guess.
The Sienna Ranch Road, there's a bridge.
Yeah, Sienna Ranch Road.
Sienna Ranch Road, the bridge is nearing completion, I believe.
Yeah, I think the latest, either midsummer or late summer is when it's in the state to be open all the way through.
Okay, very good. That's the very important part that people are looking for, to get to the toll road.
That's correct.
And, and Scott, at some point in time, can we get some numbers from the toll road authority on what traffic count is on the new piece?
Yes, sir.
Be interesting to see what it is, so. And, and let me just say that there was an article recently in the paper that had a number of people confused, and I think I've got clarification, you all can tell me if I'm right or wrong, but it led people to believe that the Fort Bend Toll Road Authority was gonna be managed by Xerox Corporation in New Jersey. And the only part that I understand that they're gonna manage is fees and fines. People will still be able to go to Harris County Toll Road Authority and get their EZ tags and do all that stuff, and they will not be dealing with that company unless they are in violation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Who said yes?
Rich Muller.
Right, Muller?
Yes, sir.
You know, get a rope, you know, in New York, that's, anyway. So it's only in case there is, unless there are fines and fees, will they deal with that, otherwise, it's, nothing's different.
That's correct.
I think it, the article misled people into thinking that, my God, I'm gonna have to deal with somebody in New Jersey every time I have a problem with my toll tag.
My toll tag works on there, it's from Harris County.
Right, Rich Muller for the Fort Bend County Toll Road Authority.
I just gave him your number.
Right, please don't do that. You can give Mike Stone's number, he's been taking a lot of calls lately, but, but to clarify, three tags are issued in the state of Texas, text tag, T tag by NTTA, and EZ tag. All of those tags work. You go through those providers, if you're an EZ tag customer, you stay an EZ tag customer, nothing changes. If you violate, that's when you hear from Xerox, and, and that's just been outsourced to them.
Right.
Harris County had been doing that for Fort Bend County for the last 10 years, they don't, they don't want to do that anymore. Fort Bend County's big enough to do it on their own, so that's why that change was made.
Okay, good. Just wanted some clarification. I didn't want to have to be wrong about it. There been, there was a motion by Mayor Pro Tim White, and a second by Councilman Emery, all those in favor? Motion carries. Everybody vote? Item nine B is consider authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement for construction of levee improvements, connector ramps, and regional water treatment facility site improvements. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Council. Yes, before you is to work with the Sienna lid district to install a levee connecting the north and the south levees along our 60-acre parcel that is located just south of our current surface water plant. And this will be to provide a levee system that'll, that'll match on elevation, and then also be able to help customers on that side with Sienna, but also some of our city residents as well, located on the east side of Sienna Parkway.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So move.
Councilman Smith made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second. Is there any discussion? Tonight, we'll vote, all those in favor, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine C is consider authorizing the mayor to execute the city secretary to test an interlocal agreement between Fort Bend County, the City of Missouri City, Fort Bend County Municipal District Number 47, and Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District Number 48 for the construction and maintenance of a regional trailway from Kitty Hollow Park to the Vicksburg Residential subdivision.
Mayor, move to the now. Second.
Councilman Smith made the motion, Mayor Pro Tim White made the second. Do you have a, do you have a map?
Is there a map included?
That would show people where it is? Is it on there?
I think it was in, maybe included in your packet.
I know it's in the packet, I want to know if it was on your slide, so that's what's shown on TV.
I'll show it up with the packet.
Yeah, do that, I think that'd be good.
While she's doing that, is there a bike trail on that trail?
It could be used, it's a multi-purpose trail, it's eight feet wide, it'll probably primarily be bikes, in my opinion.
So your training wheels will fit on it, is what they're saying.
Connects two subdivisions to a park, it addresses two parts of our master plan connectivity and safe access from residents to, to parks. It runs from, let me see here, if I can see this.
You could go over there to the...
Truesdale on the east.
Yeah, you could probably go over there to the Elmo and point, and trace it out.
Kiddy Hollow Park's over here, and it'll go, follow the ditch, top of the ditch, all the way to Truesdale, the east side of this Vicksburg, almost nine point, I'm sorry, .91 miles of asphalt trail.
Asphalt, okay.
Towny deal strictly in asphalt.
And then at what point in time do we connect that somehow to community park?
It's a good question. Some of the property that we own right now, there's a couple pieces, there's an 18-acre tract of land north of Lake Shore Harbor that was acquired for that purpose, there's another couple of parcels of land that are just south of, one's south of Mustang Bio, the other one's north of it as it turns east after running along the east side of Community Park, two pieces of land there, and that's what that land I was told was acquired for, to be a part of a connecting point from Community Park down to Kitty Hollow Park.
Because it's pretty close, I mean, it's not too far, and then the Dog Park is down at the other end, closer to Community Park as it is, so.
We just got to get some developments back there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that'll be a very nice piece when we connect that, that, I mean, people from Vicksburg would be able to go all the way to Community Park.
How long before we start construction of this?
It was originally a winter project for the county, the agreement took a while to get done, so it'll probably be next winter. That's when they typically lay their asphalt.
Very good. All right, Councilman Smith made the motion, and Mayor Pro Tim White made the second, all those in favor, motion carries. Item nine D is consider authorizing and ratifying a lease for mobile wireless data processing systems for the police department.
Mayor and Council, this is...
MBT's that are in the car.
On the motorcycles.
On the motorcycles? Okay.
Move to the now. A second. They got, they got to communicate.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion, Councilman Smith made the second, all those in favor, motion carries. Those are gonna be on the road sometime in June, right? June, chief? Okay, good. All right, item 10 ordinances, we did vote, didn't we? Okay, got to talk to them. There are no ordinances, item 11 resolutions, and item 11 A is consider a resolution approving the submission of the grant application for an automobile burglary and theft prevention task force to the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles Automobile Burglary and Theft Prevention Authority Office and containing other provisions related thereto.
Move to approve.
Yes.
Councilman Win.
Second.
Made the motion, Councilman Ellen Cat made the second. The BAT team, all those in favor, motion carries. Thank you, they're doing a great job, by the way.
Last one, say something?
Did you want to say something?
You were...
As I said, the BAT team's doing a good job, okay?
Really good job.
Yeah, very good job. Item 11 A is consider a resolution adopting a policy for the procurement of auditor services. Is there a motion?
The Finance and Budget Committee recommend the adoption of a policy that set forth a rotating term of five years of engagement by an audit firm.
Okay.
And in summary.
In summary. Is there a discussion?
A second.
I think you'd already, you'd already...
You already had it?
Yeah, a second, all those in favor, motion carries. Are there any announcements? I will say that, just to bring everybody up to date, Ron Lee, who is chairman of our P&amp;Z, is still in the hospital recuperating from whatever his illnesses are, we need to keep him in our prayers. And I think, other than that, hope you had a great Easter. Yes, sir?
Among all the events that I attend over the past few weeks, the one that I enjoyed the most was the Missouri City Lila League.
The Lila League?
Yeah, I'm so glad that they're active again, and, and I want to make an announcement so parent knows, so they can take their children there.
And Friday night is the Missouri City Police and Fire Auxiliary's big event, so if you've not bought tickets, they will sell them at the door, and it's a great event, that's, this organization puts all of that money back into... This organization puts all of that money back into purchasing items for both police and fire departments. It's on their wish list that's not necessarily in the budget. So they've bought things that the police department has used and the fire department has used. So it's a great, great opportunity for you to get out and support that organization and be a part of it, so.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
No, I just have one comment to thank and congratulate the Boy Scout today, 1424. And I know that they've been moved a couple of times, one or two times by Maria in the past, but so glad that they're here. So, thank you, guys.
Very good. Yes, you had something.
Lynn and I attended the Missouri City Ballet, their event. And even though I'm not a ballet person, I, yeah, well...
Yeah, how was your two-two?
I have a private showing for you later, okay?
How about me?
But let me tell you, there are, there are a number of young ladies from Missouri City that take, you know, the ballet training and presentations very seriously, as do they have a real strong group of mothers that are also very strongly behind it. So, you know, it's something that you have the opportunity, you know, it's well worth your time and effort to, to take one of their, one of their events in, so.
And one other, I forgot to mention, former councilwoman Ryder's husband, Carl, has just had surgery, is in the hospital, and is recovering from some extensive surgeries. So keep him in your prayers as well. So, other than that, do we have executive? No.
No.
We're through.
I tell you, they put on a good presentation.
Seeing Carl Ryder as...